It is nine o'clock and we're going to call the meeting to order. I would like to start off with the pledge of allegiance, so would you please rise and join? Okay, and welcome to the first by county meeting here. I'd like to start off with introductions. I'm Commissioner Diddy from Franklin County. We have Commissioner Mullen from Franklin County and Commissioner Peck from Franklin County. And now I'd like to turn it over to our neighbors across the river and Jerome Delvin, Chairman of Benton County.
Thank you Commissioner. And along is Commissioner Small and Commissioner McKay has called in. He's on the phone.
All right. Thank you very much. With that, we'll go to the first item here on the agenda. Discussion regarding establishing a regional behavioral health recovery center and a possible means of funding a recovery center, including but not limited to the referendum to reduce local transportation rates for votes approving a mental health tax under RCW eighty-two point one four point four six zero. And we'll discuss this as commissioners and we'd like to open it up for public comment on both items separately so that we can hear from you on each item. So with that commissioners, discussion.
Maybe Commissioner Diddy, maybe I should start and let you know where Benton County is at, what we've been doing on establishing a regional recovery center. So, you know, just recently, the last two years, the Recovery Coalition was formed by a group of advocates and citizens that have experienced issues revolving around treatment and such. And they came together about the same time, they started talking with the Kennewick Hospital District. Trios building was open now, the new trios, and so the KGH, I still call it the KGH campus, was there. Worked over two years and it looked like that, that we could get some funding because the legislature had kind of decided that there was, well, there was enough, I guess, I would say, there's several elect representatives and senators that have background in this area and they decided that the state needed to step up with funding. So, opportunity, working with Michelle Gerber from the Recovery Coalition and Lee Kerr from the Hospital District, there was a chance to get some funding so we could establish a regional recovery center. So, we began working on that. We had a really, several good advocates in the legislature, both Democrat and Republican, and we were able to secure two point seven five million. Discussion with Lee Kerr at the Hospital District and Michelle Gerber is, and talking to my board is that we would move forward, because of the politics in Olympia, that we would move forward, that Benton County would receive the funds and we would be the project lead or the building on that regional recovery center. My idea was that Benton County would construct it, build it, would own it, but we wouldn't run it. It would be some kind of a governing body would run the cities, some type of government would receive two point seven five million from the state, which is a pretty phenomenal amount of money actually for one project. The deal that, I don't know if you want to call it a deal, but with others is that we would work it like the college system does, the university system does, is you get upfront money to design plan and engineer it and start, and then you'd come back to legislature for the final funding to build the actual building. We've also, I know we've made a couple lists on the federal money for that, for this regional recovery center. So that's where we're at, Benton County. Again, I think the recovery center, when it's open and when it's built, or when it's, is that the advocates and the citizens, along with electeds, are the governing body of that recovery center. County running it, we would be the owner. Benton County owns that building and we lease it back to the Health District. The same thing here is we would, Benton County would be in charge of the building, maintenance and all that, you know, and everything that needs. Where we're at with the KGH campus is we're engaging an architect and engineering firm to go over that building with a fine tooth comb to make sure it's a, it's a, it's a, structurally, it's sound mechanically, electrically, make sure it's something that can be, can be repurposed. I think it's a great location, if the building turns out to be sound, it's a great location, it'd be a great building. Benton County has the funding and we'll buy the building from LifePoint for one point six million dollars. We're not asking anyone else to help us buy the building, we'll buy the, we'll own the building and we'll raise the money. Of course, you know, we may have our hand out to other counties, namely you, and then the cities and stuff are with the Regional Recovery Center.
Thank you. Is there comments by commissioners? Feel free to speak.
So, I've been an advocate for some sort of a mental health facility recovery center for about as long as I've been a commissioner. We've had this longstanding challenge between raising taxes and prioritizing, and I think we're headed down that road again about how we want citizens' taxes and how they're best applied. With respect to the specific building here, I want to thank our fellow commissioners across the river in Benton County for their work on advancing the concept of getting a long-needed facility. And there isn't anything I've heard in the discussion thus far that really gives me much pause, but there's always that question about how does it come out in the final wash financially? Who actually ends up paying? And I've always felt that the one tenth of one cent mental health tax, that by the way, that these boards of commissioners have the authority to have passed that. We don't need any additional authority, that was granted to us by the legislature, excuse me, years ago, it's referred to as a council manic authority. So we could have passed that at any time, but the one reservation that I've had is I don't really want to see one tenth on the brick and mortar in building buildings when we have private sector mental health providers who already have facilities and already have people to provide those services. I think we get more mileage, we get more treatment hours for people who need help by buying services rather than building buildings. At the same knowledge that the plan that Benton County is speaking to may be a very reasonable compromise between the two, to take an existing building, buy it at low cost, bring it up to specs and then have mental health treatment in a facility where they're also doing co-occurring disorders with people who have got various addictions, because I think we all know that people don't set of co-occurring disorders. So having a regional co-occurring type opportunity to treat people has value. So certainly my mind is open, my goal to avoid raising taxes, look at prioritizing existing taxes and interested in learning more about the plans that Benton County has put forward. Thanks.
Mr. Chair, if I can, I'll go piggyback on Commissioner Peck and Will said, you know, it's kind of funny, far as back over twenty years ago, myself and Sheriff Raymond actually used to be part of the Narcotics Division, the Metro Drug Task Force, and one of the things I used to say was pretty much either you or a loved one would be a victim of methamphetamines. After a number of years, that actually changed where, I know some of the phrases that actually Commissioner Pecks is in regards of co-occurring. Now, for those who aren't familiar with co-occurring, that basically means that a majority of time that they basically have a mental health issue and they're actually trying to self-medicate them with narcotics. And I guess to continue this, in two thousand and five, I actually wanted to go into my first pilot program here, in fact, it was the first one in Tri-Cities. I remember Mr. Carl Sullivan was there as well, and then my eyes were quickly opened up in regards to when it comes down to mental health. And I guess what I'm seeing now is today and for the last past years, either you or a loved one actually will be a victim of some kind of mental health issues. And if you actually really take a real big look, you'll know that I'm right. I guess in regards of continuing on this building, I think it'd be just outstanding. Would also be looking at having it for a, basically a living quarters for certain individuals to get them, to be, I guess, assisted in and becoming better citizens and helping getting them back on their feet where they can turn around and take care of themselves at a later date. But I think what we're going to be looking at more about the Ben Franklin Transit, we also talk about the Health Department, building whatnot, and I'll go ahead and call the elephant on the room if I can, in regards of what are we actually looking at? Years and for, I would say probably, further than that, I know Commissioner, former Commissioner Bowman's here, and he's just been just a rock star when it comes down to Ben Franklin Transit and basically the history of it. You know, there was six tenths of a percent of taxes actually go to bill to programs. And I guess what we're looking at is asking the Ben Franklin Transit Board and ultimately probably the citizens, if they would be willing to take that one tenth away from the Ben Franklin Transit and lean that over toward the mental, which would be able to assist substantially, where it wouldn't be any additional financial impact on any of the citizens, we would just probably be looking at for how we could utilize these funds better. That's it, sir.
Let me add, my intention is, I think Benton County, we can build the building with funding from different sources. I wouldn't want to use the one tenth for, as you said, for brick and mortar, that needs to go to direct services.
Yes.
That goes, needs to go to direct services.
Thank you for that, appreciate it.
No, yeah, and I would support a one tenth and, you know, and carry on.
One building.
Well, actually, it would be, three buildings. They've always sold one building, one building's been, or agreed to for the Kennewick City, and then the trios, one building as administrative building, so, right, so.
Okay, and just for clarification there, and we're talking about redoing those three buildings and not building a brand-new building, correct?
Correct.
Okay, that's, just want clarity there.
Correct. And so, yeah, the one tenth would, you know, I don't, we don't, I don't want to use the one tenth for building, I think we can come up with the resources, the money, Benton County, maybe some help, and we'll always take help to complete the project.
So, Commissioner Delvin, maybe I could get just a little clarification there. In your opening remarks, you spoke to the county owning and bringing the buildings up to code with a variety of funds, but then you talked about the organization running it, leasing the facility from the county, so whether you're paying a lease or paying a, in fact, still paying for brick and mortar, so lease payments constitute just the routine operations and maintenance of the building, or would there be recovery payments for the money used to build the building? I think the answer is no, it's just for the O and M, but I wanted to be clear.
No, no, no. Benton County, to make money off of this, it would just be the operation of the building, in a sense of, you know, establishing a fund for replacement of HVAC systems or whatever that's up on that building. That's one thing I found out with Commissioner, that there hadn't been a lot of maintenance done on buildings and such, and that's been one thing, and I think all, Commissioner Small certainly, and Commissioner McKay so far, is, you know, we want to take pride in ownership in the buildings that Benton County has, and that, this next discussion that we'll have on the juvenile center is to bring those buildings up and keep them in good running order, because that's what taxpayers make by their tax dollars, so it wouldn't be to, you know, to make a profit off of that building, it would, and so, we're not stuck at some time, as we did on, I think it was three million to replace all the roofs on the county building one time, so.
Yeah, so the lease payments would go to the maintenance upkeep and operation, not to recover the cost of buying or updating the building, I think that's great and it's generous, thank you.
So, two point seven five million from the state, what would that be allocated to? Is that to treatment or is that?
No, no, that's for the building.
That is for the building.
That's for engineering, architecture, engineering, if the building turns out to be a sound building, that would start that process of designing, you know, reconstruction, and we'd certainly have to raise more money, you know, I think we're, we've got some monies coming in from the federal government, I think we're, we've, Antwell, Senator Murray, and Dan Newhouse, I know we're, to get several million, and so, and I think the state, my understanding, and maybe Michelle, when she comes up at her talk, she can, but my understanding is the state is committed to help us get.
And where are we at on the timeline? Have we started the building?
Yes, I think we have, should have a decision maybe by the end of this week. Commissioner McKay had some legitimate questions, and get those answered for him, by this, can have that A and E firm start going through that building. I mean, they've had some initial looks. LifePoint or John Solheim has been cooperating along with Lee, you know, to get us access in that building, and so, you know, I expect, I don't know, maybe Robert Blain or, fill that in, but I think the timeframe, then, a month maybe, I think that's our.
Commissioner Delvin, I believe that we'll probably have a report if we get to go ahead. I think it's coming to the meeting on the eighth, and if we get the signatures on the document, then we'll move forward, probably see that report.
Okay. Commissioner Mullen?
Well, the need is there, the problem isn't going to go away, so we need to get it addressed, and I think this has been a long time coming, and I'm in complete agreement with the rest of the board here that we need to get moving forward on this, and, you know, I'm not for raising, I do believe that the, taking the one percent, or I'm sorry, the one tenth of one percent away from the transit is going to better serve the community by putting it towards mental health.
Is Commissioner McKay able to speak? Is he on the phone? Would he like to say anything?
Yeah, no, I, thanks for letting me get on here. I, and tell me if I'm wrong, I mean, obviously with me being a rookie to this, it's, I look forward to hopefully making this, I got a little back, background echo, look forward to making this happen hopefully, and I do agree not to raise taxes on it and have the board, it sounds like the transit board, we have to have them push for the, for this to get put on the ballot, it's not.
That is.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, okay. So, I, yeah, I hope that we can talk to the board and do it, where we can do the one tenth. I do think it is kind of interesting how nineteen, and I might be off a couple of years, but nineteen eighty-one, you know, for the tax, for that percentage, and then it's raised, but also I look at it to where that's almost twenty-one years of growth to where we should be, to me it looks like the transit should be to that growth of income, and so I think, yeah, I think that we can use that one tenth, the one percent a lot better where it's going right now for the transit, so.
If I may?
Absolutely.
Let's speak to the one percent a little more. I used to be on the transit board, and when I think I left the transit board, how long, how many long, did you, three, two years?
Probably three years.
Three years. One thing that I always saw in the budgets is that the transit board was sitting on thirty million dollars cash. They didn't know what to do, the administration didn't know what to do, I gave them some ideas, but I don't, but it's had to have grown in the last three years. So I don't think we're asking the board to, you know, to cut their left or their right foot off or whatever, I think the citizens, you know, that money, that one percent can be certainly, the community provide services for our citizens that are, that are suffering, I don't think it's a big ask, and I'd be, would, a letter, I think along with my other two commissioners to the transit board, asking them to seriously look at that, to allow that reason of the, of one tenth of percent. I think it's reasonable ask, and like, again, I haven't looked at their budget in three years, but I know three years or four years, a pile of money they were sitting on, and imagine that, I don't know if anyone has that up-to-date current number of that, but I imagine it's had to grow.
Maybe I could follow up on that. Maybe I could follow up on that, you know, I probably started this train several years ago, having two votes between these two boards on this same concept, and neither one of them, neither one of those opportunities or votes, uh, passed, but I think it got people looking at some important data, and Commissioner Delvin's already spoken to the capital side of it, and how much they have, excuse me, not the capital, the reserve side, you've got their operations and maintenance, you've got the capital for major purchases, but then you've got this reserve fund, think of it as a savings account, I haven't been able to get that number from Transit yet, either, latest number I've heard, uh, somewhere north of forty, four zero million, but I, I haven't been able to confirm that, but let's just say that it's a number from three years ago, thirty million, uh, if you look at the operations and maintenance budget for the Transit, again, not the capital for buying buses and equipment, and not the cash reserve savings account, just the, the annual O and M, for our local bus system, that O and M is several million dollars more than the entire O and M current expense budget for Franklin County, we run an entire county on several million dollars a year less than Transit spends on O and M, now, like Commissioner Delvin, I'm not on the Transit Board, I don't have the latest numbers, but I can assure you, if you pull the current numbers, you're going to find that that's consistent, um, so that's one of my concerns, is that we've got a transit system that I believe in, that I support, uh, I look at it as three different pieces, there's the dialer ride portion, which is an ADA requirement, and, and obviously we want to comply with the law and serve people who need that valuable service, there are ways to do that more efficiently, I have proposed those in the past, but let's just say that dialer ride is fine, and the, tends to be largely self-sustaining, takes a lot of vehicles down the road, serves the Hanford community well, I think it's wonderful as well, if I have an issue with Transit, it is simply that we have not right-sized in our equipment to the current ridership, and we ought not be speaking for ridership that we think is coming five, ten years down the road, in fact, uh, ridership has declined in the last year or so, if you look at those numbers, and keep in mind that when you see those numbers, you're not actually seeing numbers of patrons, you're seeing number of times that somebody steps onto a bus, so if I want to go from point A to B, and B happens to be on the other side of the Transit Center, when I get on at point A, I get counted as a rider, as a boarding, and when I step off of that bus, under a different bus at the Transit, and go to my final destination, I get counted again as another boarding, now, you know, the Transit, uh, team is, is honest about how they report it, they don't count it as passengers, they count it as boardings, but everybody should know that those numbers don't reflect the number of people using Transit, they reflect the number of boardings, and those are two very different numbers, and that number is declining. That has declining ridership, they have, cash reserves, because they haven't been able to spend on their O and M, uh, the money that's already coming in, and then I think the last point I want to make is that, um, this process, this one tenth, Transit are entirely separate matters, but the attempt here is to find a way to prioritize, and it'll be up to, if the Transit Board agrees to put this issue on the ballot, it'll be up to the voters in the Transit District, not the whole tri-city, but the people in the Transit District, to vote on whether or not they want to reduce voluntarily the Transit Tax from six tenths to five tenths, and my proposal has been that these two boards of Commissioners would pass resolutions in each county, saying that if the voters of the Transit District are willing to reduce it from six tenths to five tenths, we will commit in advance to approve the one tenth mental health, so that we have no net increase in taxes, we still have ample funding for Transit, as proven by their tens of millions dollars in cash reserves, we don't need to reduce Transit Services, but we do get to serve a badly needed, uh, area of our community, which is co-occurring disorders with mental health and addictions, and, uh, I think anyone who has a heart for the people who use Transit likely have a heart for the people who need a facility like the one we're talking about, and if this is the avenue, if this is the trade-off, I think it's a very responsible way to get badly needed services without raising taxes, thanks.
You know, if I might add to that, I sit on the Transit Board, and I have the book here in front of me here for the twenty twenty-one budget, we are pretty well endowed with a reserve, it's more than thirty, just say that, but we've also been granted funds from the CARES Act, uh, close to eighteen million, and we're going to get a good allotment of money from the, the next, uh, what is it, the American Relief, is that what it is, Keith? Rescue Act, uh, with that, I, that's why I've called this meeting, is because I think it now's the time, we start addressing the mental health, and it's a perfect opportunity for us to reallocate one tenth of one percent, and get started on this, and quit kicking the can down the road, it's something that has to be done now, is, if there's no, I would like to open.
One, one, one last one, I want to make clear that, that, one tenth of one percent.
I am, I agree.
Okay, I just.
Because you definitely see the need to, and it's something that has to be done, but let me emphasize what Commissioner Peck said, it's not up to us, and it's not up to the Board of Directors from Ben Franklin Transit, it's up to the voters, the ballot for them to vote on, it'll be their call. So with that, we'll open this up for public comment. Please come to the mics, there's, is there only one mic today? Okay.
I'm Sheriff Raymond from Franklin County, uh, a Franklin County resident, uh, lived in this community for well over four decades now, and I've been in law enforcement for four decades now, um, we have a problem, all of our communities have a problem, it's growing every day, why we argue how we're going to fund it, and the problem is, is we have people addicted to narcotic substances, that is transforming over into drug-induced psychosis, and we have mental illness on our street corners, and it's now bleeding over into our neighborhoods, I measure everything by this, when I get up in the morning and I step out the door, do I feel safe and secure in my neighborhood, and the question is, that, that's a perplexing question, but it's pretty easy, do you? Because I don't know about your house neighborhood, but my neighborhood, I'm now beginning to experience homelessness, uh, people walking down the street, drug-induced psychosis, stealing out of my mailboxes, all of those type of things, and what's lacking here in the tri-cities is a bi-county approach, is how do we stabilize these type of individuals and get them the help they need, the answer's pretty easy, we need to build a, a complex system to reach out and address those type of things. To institute taxes, et cetera, et cetera, about the one tenth, the penny on the dollar, that you all by the stroke of a pen could institute effective January one, and then in the future, so we could get started to help relieve some of the problems that are developing in the tri-cities and in this bi-county region, it's pretty easy, just implement it, um, I don't think anybody's going to be too concerned when they go in, uh, to buy their slurpee, that they're going to pay an extra penny in order to get help for people that we have out in our community that need bed space, secure bed space, unbed space, uh, all the wraparound services, there is a ton of professionals out here that, um, they all just need to learn how to get along in a sandbox and do what's best for our communities, uh, which is to provide, uh, public safety and a sense of security for everybody that lives there in the bi-county region, and it's pretty simple, it's institute the, meaning is the cities now have the ability to do, the councilmen, uh, in the tri-cities, in the cities, to just force it, just do it, uh, and then we'll argue about where you're going to get the pennies back from the taxpayer, because I think you're going to find most taxpayers, to include me, um, they're not going to be too concerned, they just want, they just want the problem addressed, and they want to fix it, there is a good approach that the tri-cities has taken, with a recovery center, wherever it is, however it's built, whoever owns it, we all just need to get along and, and work on this problem and fix it, because it's growing every day, and it will reach out and touch every one of us at some point or another, in our families, in our neighborhoods, and we need to, it's time to quit arguing about it, or discussing it, or campaigning for it, or, or whatever is going, we just need to fix this, and then we need to move on, I get it, go ahead, do what you got to do, but don't hold this up over this one tenth here or one tenth here, um, in order to equal it out for the taxpayer, because I think you're going to find Republican, Democrat, liberal, conservative, um, I don't think that any of them are going to mind paying that penny or so on the dollar, to include the people that we're going to provide the service to, when they walk into their local Seville Heaven and buy a malt liquor to drink and pass out on your street corner, they're also will be paying for the service too, so it's not like any of us are sharing a big burden with implementing this.
And Franklin Transit Board, I'd like to get back into this discussion, um, it isn't one cent we're talking about, it's a tenth of a cent.
Yep.
And just to clarify that, um, and it is an increase in taxes, if you implement the one tenth of a percent, it will be county-wide, currently Ben Franklin Transit tax is only collected within the Ben Franklin Transit benefit area, and from that standpoint, people in Patterson, people everywhere down the road, all the farmers out there will be now taxed, so you will be increasing taxes on, uh, a large, well, not a large, but, uh, probably twenty to thirty percent is my guess of the population, um, you know what taxes you collect as a county, um, and you can do the math, but again, I agree that you have the power to implement this, I fully support you implementing the tenth of one percent for mental health services, but I want to come back and discuss some of the misstatements that we've made, in the past eleven and a half years that I've been on the Ben Franklin Transit Board, I have seen Ben Franklin Transit grow, along with the tri-cities, it's expanded services and modernized its fleet, today, as it was in two thousand ten, when I joined the board, approximately eighty percent of the funding, eighty percent of the funding comes from this sales tax, so you're, you're talking about a significant reduction in the overall budget, um, when I joined the board, Ben, in two thousand ten, Ben Franklin Transit reserves had seriously depleted, had total cash reserves of a million dollars, total, and the majority of the bus fleet were twenty-two-year-old buses with over a million miles apiece. The, because of the recession in two thousand and two, uh, two thousand and nine, the, a significant reduction of services had occurred, tomorrow is the fortieth anniversary of the original Ben Franklin Transit Board approving the resolution, making BFT a reality, by asking voters to fund Public Benefit Transportation District with a three tenths of one percent sales tax, and a motor excise tax, in two thousand, motor excise tax went away, eventually in two thousand and two, the Transit Board was able to get approval from the voters for the additional three tenths of a percent, that, in, in those two years, it's seriously, they had to cut back services tremendously, and, and recovering ever since, and that's why it was in that condition when it comes back to two thousand and ten, they didn't buy any buses, uh, you know, they repurposed a bus with electric through a grant that we got through Senator Murray. The, the fact is, we don't have a tremendous reserve, most of that reserve number, and you, Senator Diddy, our capital plan, we're actually seven million dollars in the hole for what needs to be funded under that capital plan, the reserve that we have includes operating reserve, three to four months, we can discuss whether our reserve is adequate, but going back in history, we need to be aware of downsizes that occur, so that Transit can be stable, Transit has not, has had a history of instability because of funding issues, but that being said, today, as in the past, any proposed change in sales tax dedicated to Transit is an issue to discuss, I think former Transit, uh, Board Chair Matt Watkins, Mullins here, I don't know if Bob is, but it is imperative, it, I, I realize you are relatively new to the Transit Board, you don't have the history of how, how it's done, and I will agree that, you know, and I'm, and I'm trying to improve, of information, and the past year of virtual meetings is just driving me nuts, but I do have to say that we can discuss it, and, but it isn't necessary for this purpose to tie the two together, proper funding of Transit is essential, Commissioner Peck approached me when I first got on the Transit Board, trying to cut Transit funding, because he didn't like buses, I can tell you, he doesn't like buses, and, so this is a new proposal, but when Transit was broke, Commissioner Peck wanted to cut the Transit Tax, but recognize the Transit Tax is only paid by P D, from Transit, so, it is, we're talking of a tenth of percent, or a tenth of a cent per dollar spent for mental health services, and the question goes down to is, why haven't you implemented it already? Thank you.
Good morning, um, thank you all for your attention to this matter, I'm Michelle Gerber, Benton Franklin Recovery Coalition, and we're a nonprofit that is manned completely by volunteers, we take no funds or money for expenses of, or anything, um, we just do this because it matters to us, um, I'm also the parent of a young man who lost his life to addiction in Benton County in two thousand and fourteen, and I wear his picture very often to remind me and others I meet of the need to help others have more families in grief like mine, um, three years ago this month, I called together eight friends on my back porch, and we were talking about the need for, the fact that this is the only major metro area in the state without addiction, long-term inpatient recovery services, and we didn't know what our little group of eight could do, but we decided we'd call a meeting and we'd invite some people. But we decided we'd call a meeting and we'd invite some people. Our first meeting, we got fifty-one people. Our next meeting, we got a hundred and twenty. We now have over three hundred members, all Tricidians that care issue. I started driving back and forth to Olympia, meeting with people there that I didn't even know. I just asked for a meeting and sometimes I'd sit in on their meetings that they were having already. And trying to forge a relationship, say, we're real people over here. We need these things. And I can tell you, they're not all crazy over there. Uh, many of them are, but um, I was able to make some very good relationships with some very caring people. And through those relationships, we began the planning. And then, uh, three years later, after many meetings, um, we approached Commissioner Delvin. And I know him because he was my son's dear counselor in fifth grade here in Richland. And I don't like any of you, but I, I knew him best. And turned out to be a great friend to this cause. Um, we are in the midst of an opioid epidemic in this country. And the statistics will show that both nationally, statewide, and locally. And we can prove that. And I think as, as Sheriff Raymond said, everybody can see it with their own eyes. Um, so we totally support and advocate for a recovery center for addiction and mental illness, which as Commissioner Small said, are often intertwined. And, uh, we also believe that because we're getting state money that we advocated for, and federal hopefully, and county money hopefully, that it needs to be county-owned, county-managed. Because these are public monies and we want that accountability. Um, we, the coalition, do not wanna own or anything. Uh, we, but we do need, we do believe it needs to be publicly owned. And, uh, with management accountability to elected officials. As far as the Advisory Committee, um, all for it. We think that's a great idea. We think it ought to be of individuals. One would be elected officials. One would be experts in the addiction field because you do need expertise. This is a complicated medical disease. And the third group would be stakeholders. And that would be families who've lived this. Um, I had some other points I wanted to make. I don't wanna take too much of your time, but, um, as far as services, the local providers are little. I don't think, and I are members of our coalition, I don't think they can handle it all by themselves. So I think we need to bring in maybe, um, at least through an RFP, some expert providers, larger providers, at least open the competition. And so, um, I hope the local providers will network and be, and do cross-reach cooperate, and we want everybody who's a local provider to grow. But we don't think they can do this alone. So thank you for your time. Um, we're having actually, uh, our next month. If you're not on our mailing list, you'd like to come. And if you're out, let me know. And if you're an elected official, we'll always give you time to speak at our meetings. Thank you.
Thank you. We have two callers on the phone. And if we would, if we may, we'd take them first. And with the amount of participation, I think that, uh, it's been suggested that we go five-minute limit, so.
Good morning. This is Mr. Terrelli.
Yes.
You have, uh, the floor for three minutes, please.
Thank you. Uh, I'm Chuck Terrelli. I'm here as a private citizen. And, uh, I think we're being presented with the very, uh, with a false dichotomy. Basically what I'm hearing is, we've gotta take from a excellent service, BFT, to give to another needed service within our community. To me, it sounds like we're saying, we have to pull a policeman to hire a fireman, or pull a fireman to hire a policeman. We can do both. And Sheriff Raymond made it a certain point. Um, that one percent, you can do that at a stroke of a pen. The other issue I'm concerned about is, right now you're saying all about, the focus on funding is all about BFT. I don't know when the six of y'all are gonna get together and decide, well, if we do our stroke of a pen to get that one percent, probably gonna actually spend that. Is that a building? Is that staff? Is that, what is that? And then somewhere along the line, how many of you are gonna say, you know, we've done good enough. We don't need that one percent. So that is my concern. Long-term, I don't see any, uh, real planning here. I see a reaction to a budget. My understanding, well, one of the reasons there is a large reserve is that BFT that can't go on like a county or city can. So their debt is pretty limited. Um, there's a contractual obligation, as I understand it, that a certain number of months has to be in reserves for in case of disruption or whatever. Um, but I mean, I think there's a lot of economics. And basically, I don't believe the commissioners have studied this well enough. Uh, really reminds me, Commissioner Diddy, of when you were to show Raymond of giving a fifty percent raise or whatever that issue was, because he hadn't spent enough time with it. Um, I have heard some really, uh, I guess ridiculous, uh, numbers where somebody told me once they thought bus drivers made sixty dollars an hour. That doesn't work. And if you look at the existing budget, seventy-five percent of the budget is labor. If you downsize buses, you still need the drivers. And as the commissioners are gonna determine what the routes ought to be, uh, I don't see how that gets adjusted particularly. So in short, I think it's a red herring to say you gotta do either or. I think we of the community can do both. And I think if you want to push this, you need to have a lot better definition than what I've seen so far. I appreciate your time and thank you so much.
Good morning. Ms. Lyman?
Yes.
You have the floor for three minutes, please.
Okay, thank you. My name's Jenzo Lyman. I live at two four three five Michael in Richland. And before COVID, I rode the bus to work at thirty-one hundred, uh, Port of Benton. By choice. And I would like to know how many of the commissioners have ridden the bus? And, and just, we can get a show of hands and report back to you just real quick.
I have.
Has anybody ridden the bus?
Looks like we have, uh, at least
Yes.
three commissioners have.
Uh-huh. I wondered how recently. I am very concerned. I think you're robbing Peter to pay Paul. The people who use the bus are often already in an anxious situation. They live in poverty usually. It's not usually people who do it by choice. It's people who do it because they have no other means of transportation. Removing their safe access to reliable transportation by cutting the budget, which will inevitably lead to cut services, will put them in a more tenuous situation, which will probably increase mental health issues. We need to find a solution that does not attack transit. We need to improve transit service and expand it, if anything. I hope that you'll really consider the true likely aspect of the damage you will do if you cut transit's budget. We have a lot of people in poverty in this area. And I bet most of them didn't know this meeting was being held. And I bet most of them did not have a chance to call in or comment because they have eight to five jobs. So if you're gonna continue this discussion, you really need to have a public meeting at a time when the public can come. And you need to be announcing it in English and Spanish, and there should be flyers on the buses. And I believe you're in violation of Civil Rights Act. And I will be following up on that angle. Thank you very much. Have a good day.
Thank you.
My name is Al. I'm from Benton County. And I assure you, this is not for political points. I am running for city council in Richmond, but that's not why I'm here. I'm a citizen of, uh, Benton County. I have rode the bus. I don't know the difference between you. There's a bus system in Grapevine. I will tell you, with the Grapevine system, you can go, now the ones you can go from Pendleton further to Tacoma. I've done it, at least twice. Now, the question I got is if you have like a developmental company, maybe use something like Session Four, and go do a developmental company, work through your ports, if you can make, you go ahead and pay for what you're doing. I understand within the last year, the Franklin County Commissioners, you shopped down a home for unwed mothers or homeless or something. How are you gonna pay for this? I understand you're, you're talking about, um, having this paid per mil. I understand what you're trying to do, and I, I agree with that. This is to be applauded. What are you gonna do? And how are you gonna do this? And when you do this, understand, the governor just come out, let's say, a week and a half ago, talked about using, updating his governmentization, his electrical programs in the state of Washington. Are you gonna go with eight-passenger buses and electrical buses? I, I agree, the ridership on Ben Franklin Transit is mil, is really, really small. You need smaller vehicles. For example, the vehicles they use that, uh, have the pictures in the windows and they look like a streetcar. Those will be perfect. Eight-passenger buses would be perfect. I need to tell you that a number of years ago, I drove for the same American veterans and we used eight-passenger buses to go to Walla Walla. They worked perfectly. We filled those buses. These buses are now always filled. Also, and let me ask, you're not gonna believe me, I'm gonna ask you to bring in Burbank. That's Walla Walla County. Burbank is part of the Tri-City area. If I want to go, for example, use Grapevine, I can go through, through Yagumo Valley. If you use, yeah, electrical buses, a hybrid bus, it should work. I am not gonna ask what you, whether or not you use, like, lower hospitals, go ahead with the mental health issues, that's fine. That's your business. It's not mine. I'm not a mental health expert here. Just go ahead and consider, when you start paying for this thing, you might be paying for a forty thousand dollar vehicle. I'm not against it. I applaud it. But that's what you're really gonna have to do. But you also gonna have to have people certified to drive a bus. You're gonna have to have people update it, uh, slowly. That's all I got to say.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Kennerowski, the Chief of Police for the Pasco Police Department. And first of all, I applaud you. Thank you for, uh, bringing this and discussing this issue. This is a critical issue for us in law enforcement and in this community as we focus at providing the best public safety that we can. I, I think law enforcement, for years, has been ringing this bell. This is not new to us. This crisis that we are in right now is not new. And I want to make sure that we keep this issue at the top of your plate. I'm not sure you have anything more important on your plate right now, or any of the elected officials, than this topic. You may, but this certainly should rise to the top. And I, and I beg you to keep it there. Law enforcement, certainly over the last five and ten years, we have stepped up to the plate. And we've become better and better at dealing with people in behavioral health, and more specifically, in behavioral crisis. Our officers are the very best trained. And thank you to elected officials, you, um, municipal council members, for providing each of us robust training budgets to ensure we have the best training. And our officers and deputies are the very best trained to deal with these people while they're in crisis. Here's the issue. We do a great job at that. But once we get the crisis under control, um, we are no longer the best person to deal with that. At that moment, we are the very best. And we have risen to that occasion. But when we have a police officer now, or a deputy, who has resolved the situation, they have nowhere to take them. There are a few options out there. We can certainly hope that a crime has been committed and get somebody incarcerated. That's the last thing any of us want, is for people that shouldn't be incarcerated to be incarcerated, placed into jail. Another option is maybe we drop them off at the emergency room. That's not where they need to be either. These people need to be professionally taken care of. We need a one-stop shop. And I have advocated for this for, for years, for our police officers, our deputy sheriffs, to take these, um, behavioral health issue, uh, people, our community members, get them one place that they can receive the very best services, um, with law enforcement getting out of the picture as quick as possible. One thing we do know is, once the crisis is over, the least amount of time that law enforcement can be, uniform law enforcement, can be in that picture, the better off is for everybody. The longer we hang around and, uh, and we aren't, and we aren't the best trained to deal with getting people back on medication, getting them into substance abuse, um, nobody wins in that situation. So I'll, I'll, I'll close and just ask that you keep this at the top of your priority list. Law enforcement, you'll see, uh, law enforcement leaders sitting over here. We all, um, ask you to move this forward. Please do not kick the can down the road any longer. Law enforcement has stepped up to the plate. We need you to step up to the plate. Thank you very much.
Sheriff, I think there's a request from the Board to speak.
Go ahead.
I, I just wanna get clear to everyone. The recovery center is gonna be built, okay? It's gonna be built. I'm making sure it's gonna be built. That's not the, you know, I think there's some confusion here about the one-tenth, um, away from, that, that could be, once it's built to help operate. But I want you to be assured, that recovery center is gonna be built. One shop. I mean, I've been advocating for that for a long time. Um, that, that, that recovery center is gonna be built. If the old KGH campus, if it's a sound building, that's what we're gonna use. If it's not, then we gotta start a design on a new building or something. But, but that recovery center is gonna be built. So I want the public to know that, that, that Benton County is moving forward with that recovery center. We're gonna ask for Franklin County and the cities to participate. But that recovery center is gonna be built. Now, the whole one-tenth, one percent from transit, that's a whole different topic, whole different discussion. That's not gonna fund this building to be built. Maybe operating after it's built. But, uh, I just wanna make that very clear. I don't, I don't think everyone's clear on that. And I, I wanna be very clear on that. The recovery center building is gonna be built, okay? Operating, that's a whole new ballgame. Just wanna make that clear. Thank you.
So now that we're doing qualifications, the whole notion of an offset to avoid raising taxes grew out of the fact that neither Board of Commissioners, excepting, I think, myself, was willing to vote to enact the one-tenth mental health about seven years ago. I think is when I started promoting passing that one-tenth. And the message we got loud and clear was, no new taxes, no increases in taxes. And that's when we started looking, where could we prioritize taxes? And that's how it got us to where we are today. Completely on board with what Commissioner Delvin said about the facility being needed, and it will be built, one way or another, we'll get it done. Uh, he's right about this being funding for the O and M side. And, uh, as far as the one-tenth, uh, you know, it's, it's not a penny on a dollar, Sheriff. It's a tenth of a penny. And, uh, I agree with you. I think we should have passed it years ago, and I think we ought to pass it soon. But I also think we need to look at transit because despite what my good friend, Mr. Bloom, says, I do like buses. Sir, I just don't like empty buses. Thanks.
Any other Commissioner comments? Go ahead, Commissioner Small.
Regarding the far, you know, there's a comment basically, why we didn't do this earlier, okay? So for those who actually are familiar with mental health, I've been part of it now for over sixteen years. Now, a lot of things have actually changed in the last couple of years. Number one, actually, the Greater Oakland Behavioral Health, which is right here locally, was actually rated number one in Washington State. It started several pilot programs for so many other counties and mental health facilities throughout all of Washington State. Things have changed. Once again, good old Washington State followed Colorado as the pinnacle of basically great ideas. They legalized dope. We legalized dope. Now, we're gonna take a look at basically their mental Now, we're going to take a look at basically their mental health program. Colorado had a $1.7 billion mental health program. And then the great wonders over in Colorado decided, you know what, we're going to go ahead and basically privatize this and see what happens. This is what happened. The $1.7 billion system program, basically for mental health, raised to $2.3 billion in one year, a half a billion dollars more. Why? Because all of a sudden, they got rid of so-called the professionals that truly were in the trenches. And all of a sudden, they had to turn around and actually get specialized individuals that would get paid anywhere from two to three to maybe 10 times more than these individuals. Add to this, what you have is basically operational cost. In Washington State, basically, they used to allow us to go up to 15% of whatever funds that we had for operational cost. Figure it out. 15% on $230 million. Lot of money. You know what Benton County, Franklin County, Greater Columbia actually ran on? Less than 3%. What do we do with those additional funds? We use those additional funds to actually assist in giving as much assistance and programs to those people who are most in need. Now, why are we now in the position where we actually want to step up and actually look at how we can actually ask our citizens to reevaluate of basically, do we really need this additional funds going to prevent Franklin Transit, or do we want to go and transfer this over? I'm there because our mental health program has actually gone down in the last couple of years. And I know that Mr. Kyle Sullivan is here. Did I miss anything? Am I spot on? And you would tell me if I made a boo-boo, wouldn't you? Because he calls me out all the time, you know? So I want to make sure as well. I mean, we're just going to wake up in the morning, all of a sudden, turn around and rubber stamp this thing today. We're entertaining for what we need to do to basically leverage the funds in the best way that our citizens are going to benefit from this. So here we are. So like I said, don't be, you know, basically beating up all the messengers, whatnot, and I'm done. Thank you.
Okay, with that, we have Commissioner McKay on the phone would like to make a comment.
Thank you. Um, just what, yeah, I want to just emphasize some of the things that have been said that I completely agree with. Uh, there was one gentleman on there talking about the funding and stuff, and this is just the beginning. You know, the one-tenth, we really don't know what that one-tenth can do for us, just like Commissioner Delvin said. So this is just the beginning and kind of the process that we're just starting to get going at. The other thing too that I look at is, you know, in the private sector, whether you're a farmer, whether you're a businessman, there's times where your budget gets cut, and we're talking a one-tenth of a cent. I am pretty sure that the transit system can find a way to make their business work with the one-tenth of a cent gone. And so I'm a strong advocate for this. I know, and Commissioner Small, I completely agree with you. We are, we are, Benton County is working very hard on trying to get this facility purchased, and we're doing the due diligence to making sure purchasing the correct building, and that we're not buying a lemon, basically. But at the same time, this one-tenth is up to the citizens, and so I strongly encourage, again, that the Transit Board puts it on the ballot. I do have one question, and maybe one of you can answer it. Does, when Mr. Bloom said that it's just the transit areas that are going to be able to vote for this, is that true? Or I thought it would be both Benton and Franklin County because of it being a tax? And then so if it's outside of the transit area and Benton Franklin County area, they still have the right to vote for a one-tenth percent increase, correct?
The one-tenth tax was approved by the voters in the Transit District, and a vote on the measure that's proposed would be a vote by the members of the Transit District. But with the growth of Transit, remember that that's a very large swath of both counties. I think Mr. Bloom said throughout a notional 80%. I haven't looked at what the percentage is, but there is a difference. It's a increasingly smaller district, or difference, excuse me, between the Transit District and the two counties as the bus service expands. Hope that answers your question.
Okay, so do those people that are outside the district, they still have, so that one-tenth is going to expand out to all the counties completely? Or is it just, is this tax only going to be in the Transit area?
Yeah, so I'm not sure what your question is. Let me try this approach. If we approve the one-tenth mental health tax, that covers all of both counties. If the citizens voting on a Transit Board measure to reduce the Transit tax from six-tenths to five-tenths, should that go on the ballot and be approved, then that reduction would only apply in the Transit District area because that tax is not currently charged outside the Transit area.
Yes. Yeah, okay. Yeah, thank you. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
And I believe we have two other callers on the line.
Yes, we do. Good morning.
Good morning.
Who am I speaking with?
This is Colin Berry. I'm a resident of.
Very good. You have the floor for three minutes, please.
Okay, I can hear you now, sorry.
Yeah, that's better.
I just wanted to voice my support for Benton Franklin Transit and ask the Commissioners to not cut that tax. It supports a crucial service for our community. I would also ask that the Commissioners that serve on that board that don't actually, they live within the benefit district, seriously do some thinking about cutting a service that they personally don't have any experience using, and many of their elected, of the people that they represent don't benefit from as well. My other comments of support could be, have been summarized by other commenters, so I don't need to waste your time with that. Thanks.
Thank you. Good morning, Ms. Gilmore.
Yes.
Yes, you have the floor for three minutes, please.
Thank you so much. I want to remind the Commissioners, thank you for taking my call, but I'd like to remind the Commissioners that the Transit is not a business, it is a service. The U.S. Postal Service or the military service. Please stop trying to run the Transit as a business because it's essential for our population all that those who cannot drive due to age, disability, or income. Mental health services are also essential. By tying these two issues together, we're giving up two false choices. It's not an easy either-or situation. It should be both. It's more of a Sophie's Choice when you put one against the other. We need both services. We need a fully funded Transit making it more efficient and more accessible. Bus ridership has gone down in the last year, but in 2019, 2.1 million rides were given, and that's from the Transit. We need a fully funded mental health services as our population grows. We need more health services here. Please stop conflating the two. Please stop trying to run them as businesses. These are not businesses, these are services. Please stop conflating the issues. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sir.
My name is Leland Kerr. I'm the Superintendent of the County Public Hospital District, and I really want to bridge on some of the comments that have been made so far. First of all, I totally and heartily concur with the comments made by Michelle Gerber. You understand the need, and each of you, you know, to a great degree, I've taken that by heart to heart. One is, I am extremely encouraged by Commissioner Delvin's commitment, and I believe that's probably a repeat of the comments of each, or the concerns of each of you, that a recovery center will be built. And we want to again indicate our support. We have been working at this for a couple of years. I know that the coalition was kind of going in circles because there was no facility in which to provide these services. With LifePoint's decisions in regards to the Southridge Campus, that suddenly created a wonderful and unique opportunity, and I want to address that. First of all, as perhaps the shortest and most effective way to get to the accomplishment that we seek, and that is the Auburn Campus. As you recall, each of you put in a quarter of the cost or a couple of feasibility studies, and we received those and reported them back to you here last year. The feasibility studies show a couple of things. One, that's obviously needed. Two, that it is financially feasible. And three, that the conversion of the building is, one, doable, appropriate, and also economical. And so as we move forward, I'd just bring you quickly up to date in regards to that process. We have negotiated the terms. We are in good standing in regards to LifePoint. We can be able to proceed with exactly the purposes that we have previously defined for this one-stop shop. Second thought, we have gone through with the Department of Health before. Any type of facility can be utilized, it has to go through construction review services. In other words, make sure that the facility is going to serve the function and meet all of the regulations required by the state of Washington, and we have done that. It passes on to the next phase, which is the licensing phase, and that's to get a license to actually operate the facility when the doors are open. So we're moving ahead, and we look very much forward to waves coming and evaluation of the building, but I think they're going to find that this is a very, very sound building. Other question that was raised is what are you getting for your money, the $1.6 million? Essentially, if you look at the block, and probably the easiest way to see the facility as a whole, is go to our website at k e n k p h d dot com and go to the Tourverse Behavioral Recovery Center page, and that'll show you a picture. What we're getting is, we're getting as the KGH campus or the Auburn Campus, it's about 100,000 square feet of service area. And the initial plan that we're looking at right now only actually utilizes the first 50,000 feet of that, and that'll give us all necessary area for the detox, both secure and non-secure, and residential, secure and non-secure, and mental health. And so we still have another 50,000 feet to work with, which could provide housing for other opportunities that are on site. In addition to that, you know, I feel like a soap salesman, is that we have a connected building, the Spalding Office Building, Medical Office Building, which is likewise a part of this, and it's a state-of-the-art, I mean, it's a very, very attractive medical office building that has an additional three stories of office space and other facilities available. And it is all self-contained with cafeterias, all the things necessary to be able literally go tomorrow. If that wasn't enough, they threw in the Vettel Building, which is a satellite building which is immediately to the north of the original campus, which would be in an ideal site for our crisis response, crisis stabilization center that we've talked about being the one-stop. So like I said, the facility is there. The second thing I wanted to talk about is, there's really two financial issues. One is cost, and the other is the M and O cost. And as we've been discussing this with the various sources, with both federal and state, one thing is abundantly clear, is that nobody wants to put the first dollars in. Everybody wants to put the last dollars in. And unless we've demonstrated that, we have all contributed to this process, it's going to be hard for us to get both state and federal dollars. The district's already accumulated $600,000 to be able to put into this, and I think it's going to take, as benevolent as Benton County is, I think it's going to take all of us to be able to put some investment into this. The two counties, the three cities, the four cities, and also the district, be able to get capital piece put together. The feasibility study that you showed, had, that we provided, showed that this will actually cash flow. Once, if we get past the Capitol House, once we get the building put up. And so you've got to remember, you're going to be getting sources from two major areas. One is that a good portion of these funds are reimbursable through Medicaid. And so the vast majority of your funding for the services that you're going to provide there is going to come through Medicaid or private insurance. Portions that are not funded are the portions that we have the shortage, and those are the secure elements of detox and residential, and some of the other portions associated with the 10-minute drop-off, the no wrong door. And that's where you're going to have to have some type of M and O assistance to the Medicaid, and that's where the 1% comes in. And so as we've discussed in the past, we feel that is the most probable and the most equitable because it's most equitable means by which our various cities and counties can bear that. Because everybody's going to be essentially sharing the same percentage regardless of the size, it's all going to be based upon the number of sales. And so we feel that that's a really an equitable and appropriate way to do it. The last item is, is that I hate to see this be a competition between two essential public services. In the ideal world, I would see that if we could do this in such a manner that there is no net tax increase, which has been the hallmark of our cities and counties up to this point, is that that would be the ideal way to do it. I'm concerned, however, that the delay associated with that is essentially going to cost lives and jeopardize the project. And so I would hope that the district, the two commissions would heed very seriously the council's, that Commissioner Peck did, and that is to adopt this as a whole, demonstrate to the state and the feds that we are dedicated, we've got the M and O funds available to keep this going once we get it built, and you can then go through the process and determine if there's a better way to offset taxes rather than leaving the decision as to whether or not we are going to literally have or fund a recovery center to the voters, which would be probably the earliest since we can't hit August. Probably the earliest opportunity is going to be November, which is going to be a fairly long ways away. The other is, is I'm concerned about the delay associated with putting this in place. I appreciate the expediency that the counties have expressed on this. LifePoint is ready to remove the existing use. As a matter of fact, we, once we reach an agreement, we could probably have existing access to the 50,000 sun-unutilized this time, but we will have access to the whole building in April, May of 2022, which would give us opportunity to be able to come in and literally have it complete by perhaps the end of the summer or the end of 2022. We could have our doors open by then, and that's like, say, far enough sooner than any other option. And in the meantime, like I say, it's a number of lives that would be either saved or affected by that prompt action. So again, I thank you for your consideration. I appreciate the concerns, and I would be available to answer any questions.
Hello, my name is Ruben Alvarado. I'm a council member for the City of Pasco, and I also sit on the Benton Franklin Transit Board. I'm also here as a private citizen of a neighborhood that benefits greatly from Transit. And first of all, I'd like to thank especially the Benton. Really, I would say their commitment to really tackling the issue of mental health and really getting this project built, I really would hope to see a lot more from Franklin County in that regard. I would say I am taking time off work to be here, and I'm lucky that I have the opportunity to do that. I would say that many folks that I mentioned this meeting to do not have that luxury, folks who ride the Transit. I would say that it's important for me to be here as an advocate for them. And so really, as it comes to Transit and mobility, really it's a question of freedom. We have the opportunity in the neighborhood where I live to be able to extend services to about 2,000 people that live in my neighborhood, immediate neighborhood and the neighborhood surrounding. That was a demonstration garden, oh, sorry, demonstration bus route that was able to, you know, see how it goes if we were to have some service. And the reason I bring that up is there weren't enough funds to be able to extend services to areas like that, and the neighborhood demonstrated that they actually did use the service. I would say the complaint that people have is not that we have too good service and too great resources in our Transit. It's that people don't ride it because it is not good enough. And so I think that that would be at the forefront of my mind, making that decision from a board director. Taking funds away from a vulnerable population to serve another, I think there's other ways to do this. Thank you.
Attorney Commissioners, Matt Watkins, former mayor Pasco, former Transit and Franklin County resident. I was heartened to hear Mr. Kerr lay out an articulate vision of what this building and facility might look like, and I also want to thank particularly Benton County Commissioners for the leadership in making this happen. Longtime support, not just the private sector, really the ones that need it, that aren't eating and served by those services. We are a community of 300,000 plus. By the way, in 1980, it was about 80,000. We become. We'd be And the question about whether or not, how to pay for it, I agree with the sentiment. Make it happen, there are funding sources, and to go, the analogy of robbing Peter to go pay Paul, to have the commissioners go rob another peer agency for money to pay for it, not only doesn't make sense, I don't think it's actually an accurate analogy. You talked a bit about the idea of co-occurring, and I'd actually suggest that if you're going to try and go after a transit 1/10 of 1%, which by the way, Mr. Peck is right, is one penny on $10, not one penny on $1, and it is also, by the way, the PTBA The analogy is more closely related to rob Paul, who needs treatment of a ride, and not even his brother or Peter. So, the notion that we should be as efficient with tax dollars as possible, and also note that 4/1/3 of both Benton Franklin County Commissioners are also on the transit board, have a seat at the table to be involved in, I'm sure continue to discuss with that, that is the proper avenue to talk about that. I would also note that transit, in its 40 years of existence, is in an area that's increasingly urban. We've increased by 400%, about 350% during that time. And in particular, Pasco represents 80% of that county. It used to be 65, but it's gone up. I'd say the rural areas in the Benton County have been, remain fairly static compared to the urban areas. We need transit, and the idea that if you're going to go take money from it as well, you're also going to rob yourself of prospective businesses, because I learned over the 16 years, the attraction of businesses to the community, the auto zone warehouses, the seed companies, that all of those things, they do look actively whether or not you have a vibrant transit system. Would 0.1%, kill transit? No, but I think it's the wrong place to look, and hearing also some examples of other funding sources, I would encourage Franklin County Commissioners to follow Benton County's lead and actively look at those other sources. So, at the same time, I think you're also, the notion of involving your local cities makes sense as well. Reach out and ask them if they want to be involved, because mental health, as the chief of Pasco Police pointed out too, affects all the communities greatly. And I want to thank you all for having this hearing, and also particularly Benton County for posting it on Facebook, I wouldn't have caught it otherwise, and appreciate having the opportunity to be able to come down here and because I think, as well, the people who use transit system aren't the people sitting in the room today. They aren't the commissioners that are sitting up there. And I, over 16 years, was an initial skeptic of transit as a mass transit system. It will never be a mass, effective mass transit system when it comes to just bus routes in our area because of the density, the way we chose our communities to be. That said, this program and understand it to be, and I've seen the faces of the people that use that system, who need that system, who don't have the luxury of driving here, and it's important to remember those people that are not in the room today. Thank you.
My name is Ben Majetic. I'm the chief of police for the city of West Richland. First, I'd like to thank all the commissioners for allowing public comment on such an important issue. The one thing I really do appreciate about this whole meeting is that finally, I see a group of people up in front of me that understand that this is an urgent matter that can no longer be delayed, and that action is to be taken. Mr. Delvin, you spoke very strongly as far as it will be built. I love to hear that. Now, we're getting into semantics of how this is going to happen. I don't want to repeat what's already been said, but we all know that people are suffering. Mental health, substance abuse, our police officers right now are suffering. Try to hold this at bay, try to have some semblance of control until we find a solution that we all know what that solution is, it's right in front of us. And I appreciate that we're going to take action, but what I would urge each and every one of you is to be decisive. I know elected officials have a lot on their plate, and you really have to take a balanced approach because you represent everybody of your community, of your counties. However, we elected you to make very difficult choices, and that's where you're at right now, unpopular choices, that's where you're at now. And quite frankly, as far as law enforcement, I've no offense, I'm done with the politics. We're done with the politics. We need solutions, tough choices, and that's what we're asking you to make. We're paying for this now. We're paying it through jail costs, through emergency room bills, through social services, and other state programs. We're already paying for it. Okay, this is a cost savings approach, an effective approach to save people's lives, especially now when our state has legalized drug use. We're going to have more deaths out there if we don't get these people into treatment that say they're desperate, we need. Our mental health people are chemically addicted. It's a joint problem, as Mr. Smallhead already mentioned. And the thing is, we have a solution, and now we're playing semantics with, what is that, 1% of $10? I think the figure is, that Mr. Peck? Thank you.
It's 1/10th of a cent, and you're correct. The way you put it is also accurate.
But you say it so much better, and I appreciate that. But again, not to get emotional, but we are done. And luckily, I'm a short timer, I've been doing this for a long time, and I have some things over the next year to wrap up, and I'll probably be adding my career in law enforcement. However, I feel so strong about this, we are done, and law enforcement, we are done. We've been made scapegoats to find a short-term solution for this, and it's all you up there that have the power to solve this. And you know what to do, and you know how it can be done, and please, whatever you do, do not use delaying tactics of, whatever they may be. Again, I really do appreciate everything that you do, and allowing us to speak, and allowing us to really put it out there, but the funding, I don't know, that's up to you to decide where the funding come from. But make that hard choice, do it because it's the right thing to do, not that it's best for any kind of future for yourselves. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for your service.
George Docstetter, Pasco, Washington, live in Franklin County. And I think that we all agree the mental health deal needs to be addressed. It's whether you ask the transit authority to give up 17% of their income to help fund it. The thing they don't talk about is the transit area is the ones that get to vote on it. The actual transit area is less than 40% of the shopping area that comes to the Tri-Cities to spend their money and pay that 6/10ths of 1%. I mean, I'd love to get an Oregon exempt tax deal for all the damn taxes I've paid to transit over the last 40 years, because I don't live in their area of authority. So, asking them to give up 1/10th of 1% is not that much, when they consider that they're getting money from Walla Walla, Moses Slate, Yakima, Ellensburg even, the people come down this way to shop, and when they do, like all the farmers, they come to town, they go to the restaurant, and they pay the sales tax. And there's a lot of money collected that isn't from the citizens that live in the transit authority area. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody on the phone? Okay. Can you speak?
Nobody's on the phone?
Yeah.
Okay. Desiree Hall, Franklin County resident. I feel like I'm having a deja vu moment. I stood here in June of 2016 asking for better services. I've been a part of the local mental health care system for almost six years, specifically Lord's Counseling Center. In that time, I have been through three psychiatrists and one nurse practitioner, because these people burn out and they're not replaced. On Lord's website, under medication management, it says they have five psychiatrists, three nurse practitioners, and five registered nurses. Sorry, I got to zoom this. For someone who suffers from mental illness, access to providers and medication is crucial. On April 15th, I called and asked for an appointment, and the first available was the end of July. Three and a half months wait is, in my opinion, not acceptable. But my greatest frustration came within the spring of 2019, when I called asking for help. Mind you, I'm a former inpatient on an involuntary hold. I pleaded my case. I'm a current patient, my family is seeing signs, and I'm trying to, I can't sleep, and I'm trying to stay ahead of this, only to be told, Mrs. Hall, I'm sure you're super frustrated, but we don't have the providers to meet the needs of the community. And I recently returned from a 16-month expat assignment in Australia. In that time, I educated myself on their approach to mental health. I met with a doctor who specializes in the field. His words were, you know, "You live in the greatest country in the world, but they wait till you go into crisis before any intervention happens." So, I know that's one man's opinion, however, I couldn't agree more. And I didn't even know what it means, but it means a tendency to re-rap into a previous condition or mode of behavior. For those of us who suffer, it's our greatest fear. And let me clarify, I've never did a street drug, I rarely drink, and I'm highly educated, just like Matt said, looking around the room, we're actually more the same and different. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? Commissioners, anything more anybody wants to add to this subject?
I think there's a couple of things that would be worth clarifying. Like any issue, opinions will vary. As I listened to people making their various comments, just like we sometimes do, there were a lot of assumptions made. And one of them is that the assumption is that a reduction in the transit tax from 6/10ths from 5/10ths would cut services. Somebody else said, quit trying to run it like a business. And we hear an awful lot from our constituents about run things more efficiently, more responsibly, maximize the amount of service for the amount of tax dollars spent, and on and on. So, our chore is to balance all those interests. And I will tell you that in addition to supporting Commissioner Delvin's commitment to see this building and this facility built, which I do support, and I share his commitment, I'm also going to commit that we're going to find out exactly in detail what the budget transit history looks like, where the capital dollars are, where the reserve dollars are, and we're going to get to truth. Because I think in the last few months, I've heard more variations on what those dollars really look like, and I'm personally frustrated by a lack of transparency with respect to those dollars. So, we're going to get to some truth on that. So, in addition to Commissioner Delvin's commitment, I'm making a commitment, we're going to get to some truth on transit funding. I don't think that the 1/10th is functionally going to change anything with transit services. If it turns out I'm wrong, I'll be the first guy to stand up in a meeting and say, yeah, you know, that commitment to research this further paid off, I was wrong. I have no problem admitting when I make a mistake or when I'm wrong. But I started this several years ago, trying to get our board to approve the 1/10th mental health tax, and there was zero appetite, and I'll point out, these commissioners were not on the board then, so I'm not speaking about them in any way, but there was no appetite to approve that mental health tax. So, I went looking for a way to offset it, a way that I didn't think would detract from other services provided to the community. So, I'll tell you, I don't think that the 6/10ths to 5/10ths will change the look of transit at all, but if it turns out I'm wrong, I'll own it, but we're going to find out. As with respect to the transit area and the inferences that it has grown tremendously, the implication being that we need more money because it's a bigger service area, don't forget that population went from 80,000 taxpayers, went to 300,000 taxpayers, and the tax collections went with that, they agree with it. So, don't take on the idea that because the population is much bigger, somehow transit needs more money. As the population providing the tax base for this grows, there ought to be opportunities for efficiencies. And I think that's even more reason why they could operate on 5/10ths versus 6/10ths with a declining ridership. Again, I'm not in any way claiming to have all the answers on this complex subject, I put a fair amount of effort into learning it. If anybody has hard data that shows that any of the paths we're going down, or any of the things that I've offered aren't accurate, nobody wants to hear that more than me. I want to be right about this, and we'll make it a committed effort here over the next few weeks in particular to dive into the transit funding picture. And if you follow our Franklin County board meetings, you'll get that information there first, probably. I think that's probably all I want to say right now. Thanks.
Before any other commissioners go, we have a phone call.
Morning, Ms. Johnson?
Sí, buenas tardes. Good morning.
Good morning. You have three minutes, please.
Thank you. Buenas tardes. I asked for an interpreter and one was provided. I did not see the notice in español, and para las personas que no hablan español, for the people that speak Spanish that reside in our community. If you're receiving federal funds, you have to buy by Title VI and do a study and see the impact of this proposal to cut transit on the Spanish person and other language-speaking communities in our area. Cutting transit will impact the youth that don't have access to cars because their parents will make enough money, and it also impacts elderly, a growing population. It will impact language groups differently than English-speaking groups, and you should have a report on that before you make this plan. And you have not provided access to the Spanish-speaking community to participate in this meeting, thus this meeting should not be pursued, this plan should not be pursued. You should have a third party do an impact, a Title VI impact report before you move forward. The other thing is that we have a significant amount of disabled people in our community. I see the new transit, I go wait behind the bus when they're lowering the bus, and I don't believe you're providing an ASL interpreter, are you? And the other thing is, have you done an impact, an analysis under the ADA on what impact your decision will have on the disabled community? Granted, we do want mental health, but we don't want it to be at the extent of services that serve protected communities. And right now, you're just railroading these communities because you didn't even give notice. And without notice, there's no due process. And without due process, you're taking public services from these populations and from the rest of the community, because many people use the bus, people are not out because not everybody's vaccinated, and not everybody's out because they don't want to infect others or they don't want to just all be infected. So, at this point, saying that because there's no ridership, you should cut bus transit is ridiculous. You need to wait a year from now, and you need to follow the Constitution, you need to follow Title VI, and you need to follow the unit of laws that we have in the whole Tri-Cities, and then you will also make sure that you have the law files up about the meeting, and that you provide interpreter and ASL in this court. Porque nos están silenciando, si no nos dan interpreters, no permitan a la comunidad participar, and that's wrong. Es ilegal, y no se debe permitir seguir adelante. You guys should not continue with this plan. It's really unconscionable discussing both and backwards. Thank you.
Thank you.
John Rosenow, the assessor for Franklin County. I actually want to speak as a citizen and as the assessor. You know, I spent a decade in law enforcement in the 70s and the 80s, part of it here in the Tri-Cities, and I ended up in Southern California. If you think you've got a problem right now, keep kicking the can down the road, and you're going to have what California, Portland, and Seattle have. Guarantee you, it will reduce the value of your property, even though we're seeing over the last year or two how fast it's growing. If we don't deal with a mental health issue, and it starts to move more into the communities, it's going to start affecting those communities and the property values. That's going to affect If we don't deal with the mental health issue, and it starts to move more into the communities, it's going to start affecting those communities and the property values. That's going to affect income from your taxes. I was just provided some information a few minutes ago that a single house here in Franklin County, in the city of Pasco, pays fourteen dollars a year, not all of them, but this one, for mosquito control. That same residence currently doesn't quite meet the needs. So, no matter what the Ben Franklin Transit does, the board, the authorities there, whether they choose to put it on the ballot or not, don't kick this can. Get on with Commissioner Delvin, the Benton County Commissioners, on the building. One-tenth of one percent, I hate taxes. I really do. Even though we assess the values out of my office for that, you set the budgets, all the different cities and government agencies set the budgets for that. We establish what the levy rate would be, and then the people pay it. But a small portion of that, the taxes that the people pay on property, really goes to the cities and the counties. The majority of it ends up going to the state. So, one-half or one-tenth of one percent, no matter what the trans authority does, just get it done. I've had mental health family members, I've had lives because of mental health issues. I've seen it from the law enforcement perspective, and I can tell you in the long run, it's going to cost us more money to ignore this and kick the can down the road. Thank you.
I'm a little shorter. Good morning. My name is Anna Ruiz Berarta, and I am a resident of Pasco, Franklin County. I live in the east side of Pasco, in the Tierra Vida community. We benefit greatly from public transportation. I'm a board chair for Tri-Cities Community Health. We offer behavioral health services. And we know the importance of tackling and offering these highly needed services. At the board, we've looked at how can we help. So this is a completely different area to our service scope, but we do know the importance of providing a detox facility. So, these two commissions are working. We all know, and I think that's what I hear from you guys, that you know the importance of getting this done. So, we all are looking forward to having that come to fruition. How do you fund it? I also think that it's important not only to go and put your focus on one service, which is public transportation, to see how we fund, but if you can also look at other resources of funding on how you can continue the funding, I think that would be appropriate. As Commissioner Beck said, he's determined at looking at budgets for one entity. It would be also, I think, important to look at budget for others to see how we can efficiently fund this. That's my comment, and I completely agree. This is something that we definitely need, and thank you for your services. Thank you.
We're going to move on to the second discussion point. There's been requested for a five-minute recess before the second item. With that, we'll take a five-minute recess and come back for the second item.
Okay, we'll reconvene the meeting and on the first item, I believe that there's a motion that will be made for each county.
Mr. Chairman, before we get to motions, I'm not sure I'm clear on where we are headed. Before we get into motions, I'd like to make sure everybody understands that the counties can certainly make a request.
Yes.
To the Transit Board that they entertain, research, review, entertain the idea of putting this question on the ballot. That's really all we can do, but there's a second piece to it, which is, and I'd like to articulate how I think it would work if we wanted to ask the Transit Board to put this on a ballot, is that the two counties would agree to pass a resolution in the coming weeks or next month or two, if the timing's not critical, but the resolution would be a commitment from the two counties to enact the 1/10th mental health tax on the provision that the Transit Board placed the request on the ballot to reduce the transit tax from 6/10ths to 5/10ths, and it was approved by the voters of the Transit District. So there's really two pieces, us asking Transit to entertain the idea and two us committing by resolution to enact the 1/10th if the Transit Board puts it on the ballot and it's successful. I want to just add quickly that that's not so much my personal preference. My personal preference would be we just pass the 1/10th and then we can pursue the transit matter simultaneously, but I've had an awful lot of feedback from other commissioners, from constituents, and there is an appetite for a leaner transit operation, and so if we can accomplish the mental health funding without increasing taxes, generally speaking, I realize the difference between the Transit District and the two county areas, but if we can do that, at least the feedback I'm getting from constituents is that that's the preferable path. So I'd like to know how Benton County is perceiving it at this point with respect to asking the Transit Board to put it on the ballot and whether or not they want to entertain the 1/10th prior to putting it on the ballot or as part of that effort.
Commissioner Small.
Push a button here. I'm actually aligned with Commissioner Peck in regards to that, you know, in all honesty too, if COVID, you know who I mean? There we go. I'm actually in line with Commissioner Peck, and in all honesty, if COVID had not actually hit and done the financial impact that it has done to so many people, I wouldn't have any issues at all actually giving a 1/10th mental health tax today. But with that being said though, I think that we really need to turn around and take a look. I'm actually in absolute agreement in regards of entertaining a letter, at least let me rephrase that, writing a letter and asking if the Benton Franklin Transit Board would entertain putting this back on the ballot to see if they might be able to call it rescind or reduce the tax by 1/10th, and you know, I know that, I do see Ms. Gloria Vois there. Perhaps she can also, and I know she will be doing a financial impact to see what that would do, but I definitely like to see that go forward.
Commissioner Peck.
I'm pausing purposefully to make sure there aren't other commissioners from either county that wanted to weigh in, and not hearing anybody, then I will, I will call for consensus of the Franklin County Board of Commissioners to extend a request to the Benton Franklin Transit Board to consider the proposal that has been discussed here today, that proposal being to place a measure on the appropriate ballot at the next opportunity to ask the people who are in charge, the voters in the Transit District, if they would be willing to reduce the transit tax from 6/10ths to 5/10ths with the clear understanding and provision that the Board of Commissioners of both counties would be committing to enact the 1/10th mental health so that we can get that mental health tax in place and funded. So I'm looking for consensus from our board to instruct our county administrator to work with the Benton County Administrator, assuming they concur, to put forward that request to Transit Board.
Commissioner Mullen, are you in agreement for the consensus?
Yes, I'm in agreement.
And I'm in agreement, so you have the consensus of the Franklin County Board to draft the letter and we're committed to the 1/10th of 1%. Benton County?
The same with Benton County, I, Commissioner Delvin is.
Commissioner Small is as well. Commissioner McKay, you still on?
Commissioner McKay, yes, Commissioner McKay as well.
Okay.
Okay, we're all on board. Okay, with that, we will move on to the, is there, was there anything else on that?
I just want to make sure we're clear on this, that we have now given direction to our county administrators to craft this letter and send it.
Yes.
Okay. Do we need, do we want a signature from the commissioners or just in light of the direction to, as far as the administrators, they can go ahead and go forward to do this?
I think the letter will get it onto the discussion item for the Benton Franklin Transit, which has to be done for the Board of Directors, and then it has to pass that to go to the taxpayers, so.
Okay, so I want to make sure we're going to get that letter.
Sequence of events here.
And understand that the Transit Board may opt not to.
That's right.
Undertake it, and if they do, then I would hope that we would immediately revisit the 1/10th mental health issue. Thanks.
Yes. Okay, with that, we'll move down to the second discussion item, discussion regarding facility needs for the Benton Franklin Juvenile Justice Center and possible funding sources for capital improvements to do it. Now, this was put on by Chairman Delvin, so would you please take the floor?
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Didier. So last several years, couple of years at least, had one-on-one discussions with some of the Franklin County Commissioners, certainly had it with Benton County, I don't know if they've had it with the newly elected Commissioner Kay, and certainly not Commissioner Mullen or Commissioner Didier, but is the juvenile center in Kennewick on Canal Street is jointly owned by Benton and Franklin Counties. In the past, there's been issues on keeping the building up and, and Matt, Robert Blaine, I call him Agent Blaine because he's our purchasing agency, agent, will give us a presentation on the condition, but, but what I want to ask is Franklin County to relinquish the building, their share or whatever of that, come up with an MOU on that building, that Benton County will operate, build it, you know, basically like the recovery center, but, but because it's hard to get two counties, you know, to agree on, on what needs to be fixed and what it needs to fix, but more important, it's the resources one county has over the other county. And so Benton County is willing to take this on, again, it needs repair, it needs new building, you know, it needs to be sited, we've looked at it in the past jointly with both counties, but I think, you know, allowing Benton County to, to own the building, run the building, you know, I think it's better for everyone, that way we don't have to keep bothering you, asking you guys for monies to, to upgrade stuff, you know, repair stuff, that Benton County would take that on, and certainly with the expectation that the cost of that building would be, would be, would be, you know, your 30% would show some of that cost on when it comes to maintenance and operations certainly of the juvenile system, so just to make that clear, but that's what I'm asking is Franklin County to, to give up their share of the building and let Benton County tackle fixing it, improving it, or even building a new one, and I'll let Mr. Blaine take over, he has a presentation on this, and you have it in front of you, but it's also beyond the TVs or the screens.
Commissioner Delvin, so that I'm not thinking about this question while Mr. Blaine is speaking, because I'm going to be thinking about this question. I want to understand if I understood your analysis there. We currently co-own the building, the juvenile justice, it's an old building, it needs a lot of updating, it's going to be expensive to update it or replace it, whatever, and my understanding that Benton County is offering to take on the costs of updating the facility and/or replacing it at your discretion, and that we would continue to operate a joint juvenile justice operation out of the upgraded or replaced facility, and Franklin County's obligation would be for a pro-rata population-based share of just, just the maintenance and operations cost?
Right.
Correct. Okay, I, I think that is an interesting concept, and I look forward to learning more. Thanks.
Thank you, the opportunity to bring forward to both boards for a discussion of the condition and the plan forward for the Benton County Juvenile Justice Center. I hope everybody has a packet of the slides, I don't know if you can see the slide, so.
Mr. Blaine, could you speak real closely into the mic?
Sorry, is that better?
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, so we'll move on to slide two. The juvenile justice site is on the north, northwest corner of Canal Drive and Grant Street with a fire station to the northeast and the Benton County Annex Building to the east. The site is approximately six acres. The facility was originally constructed in 1979 and expanded in 1996 for a total of 66,000 square feet. The facility has a 50-bed capacity for detention, there are 47 employees in the administration side, along with 30 employees in the detention side, and considering all the programs, volunteers and staff, there are over 80 people that work at the facility. So the next slide, please. So as the photo shows, the facility has been deteriorating over time, there have been no upgrades, remodels or major capital projects on the site since the 1996 project. Along with the deterioration of the structure, the facility is not, is not effect efficient for the current use. Four main functions of the facility are courtrooms, administration, detention, and juvenile justice services have outgrown the facility. Several of the systems are in critical need of upgrade, fire alarms, electrical plumbing, communication, data, HVAC are all past and need replaced. Maintenance staff is challenged to maintain these systems and replace parts as, or, excuse me, replacement parts are hard to find and no longer available. Next slide, please. A needs analysis was completed in 2015, which addresses only the administration wing of the facility, solutions were proposed which utilized the Benton County Annex Building with costs under $10 million. These proposed costs, and they do not address the detention side of the facility. Recently, a direct allocation of $750,000 was secured for the Washington State Capitol Budget for design and construction of an at-risk youth services center of Benton Franklin Juvenile Justice Center. In 2019, an evaluation of the security system was completed and design started in 2020. Construction documents are 90% complete with an estimated construction cost of $1 million. This project will only update the security system and is currently unfunded. With the pending expenditures of almost $2 million and increased in unanticipated repair costs associated with the facility, is a good time, this is a good opportunity to reevaluate the direction we want to take the facility. The two options on the table, remodeling the existing available space including the Benton County Annex Building, or look to build a new facility. We are recommending building a new facility located on the Justice Center campus, Benton County would look to, look to take on the design, construction and future maintenance of the facility. The two counties would be assessed cost based on the future agreement. At this time, we're looking for direction from the two boards that they agree with the recommendation and would like to have staff further develop a plan for construction of a new facility at the Justice Center campus. We can then bring the detailed plan before the boards for final approval. I can answer any questions you may have.
Commissioners, questions?
I'm looking at the slide that says proposal options, and under new construction, which is recommended, I see four bullets, and so this is, this recommendation is collective for all four of these, meaning the four bullets underneath new construction are all together as a package?
That's correct.
So the third one says Benton County solely responsible for maintenance and repairs, and just before we started this conversation, Commissioner Delvin was kind enough to clarify for me that Franklin County's participation would be a pro-rata share of the cost of the maintenance and operations expenses, but seems inconsistent with what we were just discussing. Please, excuse me, please educate me on what I'm missing.
Commissioner Peck, I appreciate the question, I believe the slide was intended to indicate that Benton County would be solely responsible for managing the maintenance of the facility, but not solely responsible for the costs associated with operations.
So maybe responsible for managing maintenance and repairs jointly funded. Is that correct, that that was the intent, was that it only speaks to the managing part?
I think the intent is that what we're seeing in the current facility is, as Commissioner Delvin had spoke, is that it's difficult to have both counties participate in needs at the time of their identified. If a singular county was responsible for the maintenance and then could work through some sort of an agreement for funding that maintenance through operation, that would be ideal.
Okay, so I'm going to take that to mean that yes, it would be Benton County solely responsible for managing maintenance and repairs, and how we fund that's a separate discussion, although we've already alluded to it as possibly a pro-rata share. And as, as interesting as that sounds, I'll just note for the sake of discussion, and this, this isn't pro or con, it's just an observation, is that when one county is solely responsible for managing and they want to spend how much money for replacing an HVAC unit or something of that nature, then on a percentage basis, they are making a spending decision for the other county. And I'm not saying that that's something we can't overcome, I'm just pointing out that the agreement would need to detail that perhaps based on the amount of funding, there might be some discussion. I don't know if you're following me, but we're two separate legislative bodies, and having one with the authority to expend funds on behalf of the other county, even without that county's direct involvement, could be problematic, so the details of that financing agreement are delicate, but I do believe they could be worked out.
Robert, if I can. I think the way kind of I'm actually interpreting is kind of what we went up doing with the jail, for instance, for instance, the way we actually went up doing things with the jail is, it'd be probably on a three to maybe a five-year average, and so therefore if we actually have spent like a large sum of money or we actually have a, a high year of expenditures, whatnot, that actually would be probably divided in probably three to a five years, so it wouldn't be just a huge hit as we kind of do with the cities, and hopefully that kind of clarifies.
Let me, let me. That adds to it, it doesn't really clarify, but it does add to it, and I, I do think that reasonable people could sit down and we can, we can figure out a formula that works. I'm sure that Benton County has no desire to expend monies on maintenance and operation on a facility unless it's necessary, and that being said, I, I think we'd probably be fine. It would just, it'd just be necessary for our board to give some sort of a, of a formal authority, because you would in, in effect be making some spending determinations on behalf of our county, as long as we, like I said, had a good detailed agreement, I, I think it's, it's doable.
I, I think those are the details we need to work.
I agree.
Work out, Commissioner Peck, but my, my idea, my sense is, you know, that, you know, in the budget for the juvenile part of Superior Court, you know, there's operational cost in there and there's, you know, you know, is that, that needs to be worked out, I mean, so I, my idea is to make sure, is to not have you, Franklin County, having to come up with a bunch of money at one time to fix something, is that we'll be responsible for that, you know, and, but, and then maybe it's assessing some facility costs on a yearly basis or monthly basis or whatever on the operational cost of that building, not necessarily maintenance in the sense. Not necessarily, um, maintenance in the sense, um, that's my, my wishes. I, I want to separate those two out. So the regular day-to-day cost of, of that janitorial, the security, and, and those type of things, that's all in the, you know, the seventy-thirty split or whatever the counties do now for the, for juvenile under Superior Court. Um, and then we'll be solely responsible for the maintenance and repairs of that building.
So if it needed a new expensive HVAC unit, you'd be solely responsible for that?
That's my thinking, yes.
Okay, well, it would certainly be hard for me on behalf of my constituents to argue with that thinking. It, it sounds, uh, uh, a little beyond reasonable. It sounds generous, so thank you. Uh, and I agree with you that, uh...
Well, I just, I think it just takes a lot of friction off the table.
Well, I, I agree it does, and, and it comes back to the age-old issue of we're two separately-elected bodies beholding to two separate groups of constituents. And Franklin County should never be in a position of having authority to direct spending, uh, for Benton County and vice versa. And you've proposed something that cures that concern, and, uh, I appreciate it. Uh, so like I said earlier, I, I think really it's just a matter of crafting a responsible detailed package that lines out all the responsibilities of the parties. So thanks for the, uh, further clarification.
And I would leave it to, you know, the administrators. They can work this out, the details. But that's my concept, my goal, my...
If there's two people in the room I trust, it's Jared McPherson and Keith Johnson, so I'm with you.
Same here.
All right. Well, I think we've got that. Uh, we, we had it down here for public comment. If the commissioners are done, go ahead, Chump, Commissioner Small? Anybody for public comment on this? Please come to the mic. Keith?
No.
All right, well, I think we've got...
I know we have the presiding, Cameron, are you the presiding judge now, or? I know you're Superior. You have juvenile and, and, um, and staff here from juvenile, yeah. They want to talk, they're more happy.
Well, it sounds like we have an, okay.
Daryl, Judge Mitchell.
Oh, that, that'd be interesting hearing from Daryl and, and from Judge Mitchell.
Well, we, I think with, uh, the exception of, uh, Commissioner Mullen, I think everybody's had at least one tour of the juvenile court and, and, uh, know pretty well what we do there. So, you know, the need, I don't think we have to justify the need because that place is, um, just kind of deteriorating around us, but, uh, so I, I appreciate this. I look forward to...
Daryl, can you move closer to the mic, please?
Yeah. I, uh, forward to working, you know, through this. And so whatever we can do to be helpful with it, appreciate the help we've gotten from Mr. Blaine here. And I think building a new facility is the right way to go. That, you have no bones to remodel over there, so.
And, and isn't it true, Daryl, I mean, the, the incarceration rate, incarceration rate is way down amongst the juvenile because the whole system's been changing over the last fifteen, twenty years? So a lot of that detention facility now is just empty.
Well, since COVID, so...
Well, even before that, they actually went up having a financial, uh, basically a, a cut. And that actually went up actually reducing the amount of inmates we could have there just due to lack of staff. And then it's solely...
Well, they kind of going up. Yeah, the cut we were anticipating was coming from, uh, civil clients. So our Becca truancy thing, that, uh, I think it's dying a slow death, really, uh, at the state level. But our funding for this year is, looks to be intact. So I, I was planning for cuts. It may not happen. I tend to try to look forward and see the trends and, and anticipate those. But, uh, so...
But like, we're not incarcerating as many juveniles as in the past. The system's changed. We don't need a big, big jail.
Well, maybe. Prior to, uh, COVID, our average daily population was around thirty. That dropped, and it dropped clear across the state. Last, I think last Wednesday, we were number four in the state below King County, Pierce County, St. Homage County, Spokane, and we had ten kids. Okay. So that tells you, and referrals from law enforcement are, are down and filings from prosecutors.
So could it be due to, due to recidivism? I mean, I mean, has that gone down then? I mean, we...
I haven't, you know, I don't know where...
Are they coming better? Have we got less cases?
I think, yeah, I, I don't have a crystal ball, but I think there's several things coming to that. One is school's been out. School's a big driver for us, uh, across the state. You have different laws that have come into effect. You have a juvenile court rule that the Supreme Court, uh, initiated in February that reduced our ability to use warrants. You have, um, not so much the Blake decision didn't impact us a whole lot, but it, it will some.
But my, the, the, the amount of beds are available in the detention if it was completely all open, because it's not completely all open now. How many beds is that facility?
We have staffing for...
No, not, there is a staffing. If you opened all of the, if you got all the...
We have about eighty-eight beds.
Eighty-eight beds, right.
If we, and if we wanted to double bunk, which we don't want to do.
We don't need that eighty-eight, full eighty-eight beds. Your staff for...
You probably don't need eighty-eight. You may need more than thirty.
Because a lot of the, last time I was there, I mean, you just had stuff stuffed in cells because they were being used because you didn't have staffing either.
Well, we have the old part of the detention center that was never remodeled. That we've utilized as different spaces. So decrepit, you can't put...
Right, right.
Yeah.
We don't need that many new cells in a new facility as we had in the old one.
What you need to look out for is there was legislation this year that did not pass that would have changed the age of jurisdiction for juvenile court to eighteen and nineteen-year-olds. I believe it's more likely than not to pass in the future. And that will increase our need for services. It will increase our detention population. And you'll also have an added issue of, uh, having an eighteen or nineteen-year-old in a detention center with a twelve- or fourteen-year-old.
Right, right. And the current facility isn't going to allow that.
The current facility doesn't allow that. We need to plan for that. We need to plan for the, the increase, potential... Uh, and the way trends are going...
So, Daryl, excuse me, but I've been trying to get a comment here. I don't want you to get too far down the road. It, it isn't just that the eighteen and nineteen-year-olds will increase the population. It's the separation issue that Commissioner Delvin alluded to, and then we kind of slid past that. Uh, in your mind, in my mind, that's a significant challenge. What do you think?
Significant challenge. And the other challenge that, two years ago, we were given legislation around solitary confinement. Now, we don't put kids in prohibiting solitary confinement. We don't want to put kids in solitary confinement. But it really increases our responsibility to have kids programmed the majority of the day and not in their rooms. And, and that takes increase in our staffing and our space and our creativity, frankly. And so we've done that. We've done a really good job out of it. But we've converted some staff into program staff, and that's what they do and focus on, so.
And so to the degree that we're successful as a team with the courts in directing some of these kids to addiction treatments, mental health therapies, all the things we've been talking about today, that might serve to reduce some of the capacity needs at the same time that the other issues we discussed might serve to increase. So we kind of had a tough spot to try and put our finger on exactly what the right size might be.
Yeah, I, I think that will be a challenge. I mean, you don't want to be too big, but you don't want to be too small. And we don't want to ever, you know, I don't want to lock kids up just because I got a room at the end. And I, I think I would really encourage you, you know, our previous discussion here today, we need to have an adolescent function to that recovery center. And that's imperative because my kids have, you know, when law enforcement doesn't have a place to put them, they come to me and they have all the co-occurring disorders and these services to deal with that, too, so.
Man, it's the same in the jail, right?
Yeah.
Obviously hard to predict, but at this point, if you were looking at a new facility, I'm not going to hold you to this because there's a lot of variables. Let's just be clear. But your gut, is it telling you that we're needing something noticeably smaller, noticeably bigger, or about where we are now? Terms of physical space, not staffing, not programs, just physical space. And I won't hold you to it because there's lots of variables, like we said.
Yeah, it, it could be a, a similar size or slightly smaller size, but it would have to be redesigned.
Okay, yeah.
Give us all the programming that we needed. And it'd probably hold about fifty kids without double bunking or anything like that.
And, and I appreciate that because it is going out on a limb a little bit with all the variables. But what I'm hearing is at least it's not something bigger.
No, I don't think we want to go bigger.
Okay, thanks.
Just smarter.
So, so the question, the, you know, Franklin County Commissioner's willing to let the, our administrators work that out, but basically relinquish the building to Benton County and let us go forward with a new one or whatever we decide to do?
Commissioners, you in consensus to that? Let the administrators work it out, and then we'll review it before any decisions are made?
Yes. I, I, uh, look forward to them having that discussion and look forward even more to seeing the, the plan for how we make it work. I believe it can be done, and, and I want to thank Benton County for, for the offer.
I want to thank Benton County, too, for stepping up to the plate and updating the building. So with that, I think we have consensus for the administrators to put this together. All right, is there any other business that any commissioner would like to bring up? We've covered our topics that were on the agenda?
None from Benton County.
No, I, I just wanted to say thanks. I think it's a very, uh, constructive, uh, meeting today. And, and I think we, uh, definitely got a lot of things taken care of and moving in the right direction. So good work. Thank you.
Well, thank you for joining us and making it happen. So with that, the meeting is, excuse me? Uh, for, public comment? Well, we, we have, sure, go ahead.
Thank you, commissioners, for, uh, taking another step in this mental health journey that we need to take. And, uh, didn't think that some of these comments were appropriate for the two topics. So thank you for this opportunity. It's something that you guys should consider. Um, we have a lot of challenges, um, that are by county. And I would encourage you guys to consider doing a meeting either biannually or quarterly possibly. Doesn't need to be a long meeting, but to tackle some of the challenges that we have by countywide. And, uh, would encourage you to do that. And one of those things, as a developer here in the tri-cities, one of the challenges that we have facing us that is going to take, uh, real leadership to handle is some of the traffic issues that we have. Something that's, uh, that's a heavy lift that's going to take leadership to take care of is we need a, another, at least one bridge across the Columbia River to join our two counties. So I'm not sure what that looks like, but I think it's something that needs to be addressed and, and, uh, something that certainly the six of you gentlemen, um, could work on. And, uh, really want to sincerely say thank you for the, taking the mental, mental challenge issue on. I, uh, I love kids. I've worked with kids and done a lot of volunteering. And, uh, that's a challenge that we need to, we really need to address. And I'm, I'm very appreciative that you guys have, have chosen to take that next step. So thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you. Benton County will build it out halfway across the river.
Where at? Where, where are you talking?
Well, I don't know where we're talking. We're just going to build it halfway out there somewhere.
All right.
Not until you've done a bloody expensive EIS.
Okay, with that, if there's no other public comment, the meeting is adjourned.